Barbara, can you hear us?
Yes, do I need a sound check?
Yep, sound good, loud and clear. Kim?
Okay, I'm gonna go on, there's just some noise going on, thanks.
Okay, I saw you smile, Kim, so I think we're good.
Can you hear me?
Yep, how about us?
Yes, excellent, thank you.
Nice.
How's that for volume?
Sounds great.
Okay, great, I've got you on a different sound system, thanks.
They were plowing my driveway, I have to move my car really quick, I'll be right back.
You got your car moved that quickly?
No, they're still blocking my driveway, I just need to get it out of Syria's mind, my house in a second, so I might have to run for a sec.
No problem, I don't think we have everyone, and let me just check.
And I'm promoting Olivier right now.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, Melissa and Kim, are you available to turn your video on?
Hello, hello.
Hi there. Okay. Jose, do we have everyone that you're expecting in attendance?
Yes ma'am, we do.
Welcome, it is January 17th to 16pm, I'm Mayor Barbara Noseworthy, and this is a study session of the City Council. I'm going to go around and ask, just following through on, for councilors to identify themselves, so that people listening can recognize your voice.
Kim Baxter, City Councilor.
Olivier Bosman, City Councilor.
Jessica Buell, City Councilor.
Melissa Yussef, City Councilor.
And Jose Madrigal, do you want to join in? Thank you.
Sure, Jose Madrigal, City Manager, I know Bill is here, I'm not sure if he's gonna be, what, how he's gonna be logged in, but he'll be logging in here soon. And then also, Tom, if you can hear me, I think you did get, there's Lori Weigel, who's on here, good, she's a panelist, and then also Jared Biggs and Cynthia, also two panelists. We're ready, Mayor.
Great, thank you, just for a bit of business, I may have an unstable conditions, internet connection, so I may need to go dark. And if it gets loud downtown, I may need to mute myself, so I'm giving the mayor pro tem, fair notice that I may need to change my status at any point, but right now, seems to be good. Great, I'm gonna start the meetings as I start study sessions and city council meetings with a statement of land acknowledgement. This is my statement, it does not reflect the opinion of council, or council as a whole, or others. For thousands of years, this region was home to numerous people, bands, tribes, and nations. Each had their distinct culture, artistic expression, and community mores. In particular, this region was the ancestral home of the N'chou, Dine, Pueblo, Hopi, multiple Apache bands, and various other tribes and Latinx people who used and stewarded this land. I recognize that indigenous peoples were forcibly removed from their ancestral lands by the US government. It is therefore important to recognize that the narrative of this region has mostly been told from the dominant perspective, without recognition of those who came before us, and who to this day continue to thrive, create, and connect with this land. Thank you for your respect in acknowledging this, in my acknowledging this legacy, thank you. One more bit of business, Jessica has informed us that she may need to step out just for a moment of snowplow, making certain cars not snowplowed in. So we will pause, if you need to do that, Jessica, we'll just take a break, so that you can do that when it's necessary.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could interrupt, just to let you know, Bill Tuthill is also in attendance, you need to communicate with him.
Wonderful, that's great to know, thank you, Bill, and we're welcome to Durango, I understand you did make it in on a flight, so we are delighted to have you here.
I'm in the council chambers as we speak.
Great, great, so the first order of business on our study session is future new business and review of agendas. Jose, first of all, I don't have it printed up in front of me, while I'm waiting for future new business, could you just take us through what's gonna be on the study session for February? What day is that, February 6, 7?
Mayor, let me find that information really quick for you, I don't have it on hand, but I'll-
No problem, I'm sure Ben will have it, I just didn't get it printed, my bad, great, so let's talk about future new business.
Well, I have two items, I don't know, does anybody else have any items? No?
I do, but I will last.
Oh, okay.
I might have one or two, and/or an ad, we'll see.
Okay, well, this one's probably kind of challenging for council, so, and I feel that it's unfortunate that this conversation even needs to take place. But as we all know, Councilor Bosman's recent social media post regarding the library, and the false and misleading information that he gave in that post, is just the latest example of his lack of professionalism, that brings me to believe that his behavior should be addressed by council. Councilor Bosman's pattern of repeatedly spreading misinformation regarding city operations has mischaracterized projects and facts, and has continued to violate the city code by giving direction to staff. His unacceptable behavior, continued mischaracterization of facts and situations, has a harmful effect on our community by creating anxiety and mistrust, and has a negative effect on the morale of the employees and the city organization, as well as challenging council and doing the job that they were elected to do. I believe that since January of 2021, Councilor Bosman's has continuously displayed inappropriate behavior that violates at least seven items in the city's code of conduct. Giving direction to staff constitutes a violation of the Colorado State Statute 31-4-212, council not to interfere. And it deems that behavior to be misconduct. And it gives the council, so it says it constitutes misconduct and is punishable in any manner, in such manner as may be determined by the other members of the council. So my question to council would be, would, do you want to review the evidence of Councilor Bosman's repeated violations of the code of conduct? Discuss those violations, and determine if a course of action is warranted? If indeed that is the choice that the council makes, I would recommend that it be held as a discussion at a special meeting, or in addition to our retreat in February, as that's what's been recommended by SIRSA and some other groups, so that's my question, do we, unfortunate, as unfortunate as it is, and since the behavior doesn't seem to have ended and it continues, is that something council would like to do?
Counsel?
I'd like to ask, you imply there's violations. There is no violations, so if you feel that there's violations, the first thing you should do is substantiate your accusations, and do that in the proper format, instead of just throwing some hot air in a city council study session.
I'm gonna make certain that we do not go into something that's not agendaized. Councilor Baxter has brought up an item, it is for council to discussion, they will then determine through that process what might be necessary next. So I'm sticking to the raised question, this is not a back and forth conversation, it's just, what does council feel about this?
So I was trying to understand what the question was, exactly, Councilor Baxter, but I think I got it correctly. And just what I would like to suggest is that I, I do support a public discussion about council behavior, how we interact together, and how we abide by the code of conduct, a review of the code of conduct. I think it's, I think it would be helpful for us as a team to be looking at how we interact, and for the public to be very well informed about how we interact together, and how we follow the code of conduct, and do our work productively and effectively. So I, I do support that type of conversation, if that answers your question.
Thank you, I would think it does, yes, thank you, I would take it as a yes, you would support having that conversation.
I too would support having a conversation, when I heard about that last Facebook post, I too was concerned, because as I've said numerous times, what we say and how we say it matters. And spreading misinformation, I would like to know, I too, like Melissa, think that learning maybe what the steps are for certain council behavior, how we can go forward together in a productive way, what's acceptable, what's allowed, what are the consequences, I think are important, so I do support the conversation as well.
Thank you.
Councilor Bosman, what do you think about this conversation? You've already talked about your view, but it's whether or not yes or no, you support it.
I think we have a code of conduct and a code of ethics, if there's any alleged valuations, then there's a process to follow. I encourage you to follow the rules we have in place. I think it is premature, even a waste of time to have a council meeting to discuss my post on Facebook, which there is no violation. But if you wish to have a discussion, which I understood from the two councils that spoke, Melissa Yussef and Jessica Buell, about the code of conduct in general, or behavior in general, then I'm open to that. But I think it is very inappropriate to allege or imply that there's violations without substantiating it. And if you believe there is violations, I believe you should follow the proper process that is in place in our city.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I do not support discussion about me, I support a discussion about the code of conduct, education on the code of conduct, education about the Robert Rules of Order. And I think that is what the other two councilors said, unless they imply that there's a meeting to be held about my personal behavior, in which case I do not agree.
Excuse me, I did take, thank you, Councilor Bosman, I did take it that mentioned both your behavior and working group, and council as a whole, so I was taking notes. If I'm not clear, I would ask Jessica and Melissa to, to be, to clarify that. I also support a meeting, actually to discuss the issues Councilor Baxter raised, and I would also add that our working group call, a working arrangement, and the things that we set out at our first retreat a year ago called for us asking, actually discussing these things as a councilor, if we think behavior is inappropriate, so I support that as well, thank you, Nick.
Can I have a point of clarification?
Yes.
What is it that is being supported here for a meeting? I would like Councilor Yussef and Councilor Buell, to, and yourself, as well as Councilor Baxter, to be very clear on what you are supporting to be discussed during a future meeting.
Councilor Baxter, would you please read your request again?
So my question was, is council interested in reviewing the evidence of Councilor Bosman's repeated violations of the code of conduct to discuss those violations, and determine if a course of action is warranted?
Please indicate yes or no.
Yes, I support that, in addition to council productivity, I want to circle back to like, initial meetings that we had, and how we were gonna go forward, and how, what is, what's appropriate council behavior, what's acceptable, what are consequences for stepping out of bounds and going forward? But yes, I believe Councilor Bosman's has crossed the line numerous times, and I would like to know, you know, especially with those repeated violations, what do we, how do we discuss them, how do we go forward, and what are the consequences?
And the other request was of Melissa Yussef, for clarification.
I also agree, as Councilor Buell just outlined, I just think it's really important for our community, and I want, I'm anxious for these discussions to be had, and preferably a study session, so the community is well aware that we're having these discussions. We need to be very productive and efficient and effective with our meetings, how we work together is extremely important, the community deserves to know how we're interacting together as a body. So yeah, I support everything you're talking about in public.
Okay, I believe there's a consensus among council, all right, next.
So do you also feel that way about my-
I do, yes, I do, absolutely, so that'll be something that we'll work with the city manager to schedule. Now, Melissa, you said you might have some, and Kim, you said you had two, you have another item?
Yeah, Melissa, go ahead, and I'll come back to mine, oh, but you're chewing.
Go ahead.
So something that we've all been hearing about lately, and seeing, and not knowing quite how to handle, has to do with our municipal court, and how it works, and the framework of it, and how it supports our police endeavors to enforce our ordinances and our laws. And I realize that we as, we council members probably are not qualified to know what the, a good structure, a good sense of procedure and processes for the municipal court, because to my knowledge, none of us have ever been either judges, prosecutors, or policemen. So I'm wondering if there might be interest in determining whether or not there's a way to determine whether or not we have best practices, what those might look like. I know there's, during our meeting with Judge Law, there were things like, because of this current structure of the municipal court, people who have been cited can't necessarily show up, be in court, when, within their 48 hours that they're supposed to be, because we don't have court often enough, you know, things like that. And what should the city prosecutor's responsibilities be, stuff like that, Bill, I'm sure Mr. Tuthill has some expertise in this area, and I'm just wondering if maybe we might not want to have a conversation about, now that we've brought best practices so deeply into the city operations, is it time to bring it into the municipal court area?
Mayor, if I, if I may, Tom, could you bring in Chief Bremmer as a panelist? Chief, I do believe has been working on doing an agenda item in a study session on this topic. topic in regards to municipal court, but looking for some time as we're continuing to see what might be some of those best practices to look at as well as with the addition of Bill. So that is something that's already on the works for us to do. I see Chief Bremer's here. If he can just kind of speak maybe on kind of where a timeline might be for that agenda item.
And before the chief jumps in me, I also give all of council an update. I do want to say that the mayor Pro Tem and I met with Sarah, the municipal judge, to go over the evaluation that we provided. And she also shared with us again, as she did with council, some of the issues that around prosecutors and issues around that that put some constraints on her. So I do want to say that I called Bill Tuttle, our interim city attorney, just before this meeting to give him a heads up that while I wanted to meet him, I would, my most important item was for him to be able to speak with the judge and have some sense of the issues that she's facing and some of the clarity she needs from the city attorney's office with regard to prosecution. So I want to make certain that all of council is aware of that as well.
Mayor, Bill would like to raise his hand. We just don't have a camera on him.
Councillor? Mayor, I have, I did briefly discuss this topic with the chief of police over lunch today. I have reached out to the municipal judge to express an interest in having a conversation with her and how people who act as prosecutors for the city attorney's office interact and how we can all figure out how to accomplish the objectives of the city. I don't want to step on anyone's toes, but I'm certainly willing to have those conversations and have reached out. The judge is not in today, but I have contact information for her and we'll try to set something up for as early as tomorrow, if that's something council would like to see me at least have a conversation, introduce myself and get the ball rolling from the city attorney's perspective. I would however, encourage all of you not to disclose any particular discussions you had during your executive session over the municipal judge's performance review.
Yes, we're very careful about that. But thank you. Chief Bremer, please, go ahead now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, this is a topic that we're broaching and this is something that we've had a conversation with our city clerk on. We've met with the municipal prosecutor and the judge wants to discuss some of the obstacles that are in front of us for efficiencies and how we can make municipal court function better in order to serve the needs of our community. Bill and I spoke today about this at length and I think we, you know, have some ideas of at least what we can envision what this will look like moving forward. You know, just to satisfy the community and to ensure that, you know, our efforts, which is 67% of our criminal cases are filed in the municipal court, you know, are being handled appropriately and we can actually make an influence on people to safeguard our community. So it's a, it's a worthy topic and I thank you for having this discussion today to allow that. I think initially we had it on a study session agenda. We just weren't prepared because we haven't spoken to enough stakeholders yet. So I anticipate this in the next coming months, once we have an attorney on board, that's going to be able to assist us with that process as we do now.
Thank you, Chief Bremer. So if I understood that correctly, there's a plan to have this topic discussed during the study session and then council can decide if if there's an outside group that helps us with this, or if we did it all internally, that type of thing. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. Tentatively March 7th is what it's on. They just said on our study session calendar, March 7th, tentatively. If anything changes, we'll let you, let the council know.
And has that been communicated to the judge?
I'm not sure. That's just where we put a place marker on. I think there's discussion still to be had with the city attorney chief and the municipal court judge of what that could be.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Let's make certain that that's also going to work for her. Thank you. Okay, Melissa, did you have some items?
One of them was kind of included in the first one. That's why I thought it might be a little bit of an ad. So I don't need to talk about that one. But my other one is just an interesting kind of a new, completely new, new business topic for us, but one I wanted to bring up to see if this council may want to have this discussion. And that is as we see ourselves running, you know, or the city running a new city council election, and you start thinking about the type of individuals that we may be able to attract to run for city council positions, given the time commitment and everything that's associated with it. I find myself falling, you know, wondering about the conversations that we've had, kind of sometimes each of us behind the scenes about should we be considering increasing the pay of city councillors? And I bring that up as a discussion that I, I'd kind of like to have potentially with this group. We have two outgoing councillors. And we have three that would stay on. Any of these type of discussions in my mind, if anything ever were to happen, wouldn't impact at least for this current term of current councillors, it would be for future future generations of councillors that may be able to step forward and run. But it's just something that as we have these elections that have, that comes to my mind as something I would like to have the conversation with because to me, it, I think that we might be able to attract individuals that may not otherwise have been able to run and therefore potentially get more diversity. And, you know, allow, allow for more opportunity for people to consider this a you know, more of a part-time job maybe even. So just throwing that out as a new business item to see what this council thinks.
Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate you bringing it up. I will remind council that we actually raised this last year as part of our strategic planning and the discussion was that we were I'm looking at Jose, that we were going to look at what other efforts could be done, what other issues are barriers for council, diverse group of candidates applying? Is it just money or are there variety barriers? So that might be something, Jose, I don't know where we're at with that, but it might be something to step up as well.
I mean, there's always a time to talk. If this is an area where we want to talk compensation, we can also throw in some of the other things that are there and kind of look where we rank in state Colorado as far as council pay and what adjustments might be able to work.
I would support looking into maybe comparing to other, you know, municipalities and where we, where we rank and how it is. I will say I do know there's some positives and negatives to both pay, an increase in pay and potential increase in responsibility. For example, I wouldn't run if it was an increase in responsibility and pay like people, you know, and so it's it's a kind of a touchy back and forth, but we also currently, I think only have two candidates running. And so maybe we need to look at why that is, because when we ran last, there were seven of us, I think. So yeah, I'm fine and I support looking into maybe what others are doing and how we compare and if we think it's a benefit or not.
Other councillors?
Jessica, I think you pointed something out there that's really true and it's a pro and a con, right? And it's a one or the other, there's benefits to both and there's cons to both. But I do think the conversation is a good idea. I know before COVID came in that there were community members who were thinking about actually putting a ballot initiative on the ballot to change councils' pay so that it was more of a job versus volunteer position, if you will. So I think that there is interest in the community in understanding that and whether or not that's possible or not. So I agree with you. It's like I don't have a position on it because I don't, I don't know the pros and cons at this point, but I know that there are both. So a conversation might be a good thing.
And councillor Bosmans?
I support that future discussion.
As do I. Thank you. So we'll put that on the, some kind of a agenda or study session. Very good. Other new business items, because I have one, but I'll go to at the very end. Okay, great. So I've been concerned with attendance at city council meetings this past year. And so I went to the minutes, which if anyone knows, they're actually in a book. You can go to all the minutes. Right now they're from like, the book is from Jan, June of, I think, 2020, 20 of 21 to present. And then they're actually available at the library and they're actually may even be available on a disc. So I went to the, just this last year's minutes of the study sessions and the city council meetings. And I also looked at special sessions to go into executive sessions and special sessions for other topics. And the study sessions and the city council meetings, I think it's very important to recognize that we have that schedule a year in advance. I mean, we all know when those meetings are. So what just concerned me is that of the study sessions, and I'm going to actually put some names out here because I think we need to discuss this. Councillor Bosmans missed six of the 23 meetings that we had. Now, it's not about excuses. It's about missing. We all have excuses. That's 26% of the meetings for study sessions. Now, Melissa, Jessica and I missed some, two, one and one, and councillor Baxter missed none over the past year. On the city council meetings, we had 23 meetings. Again, councillor Bosmans missed five. That's 20, just shy of 22%. I missed one, Melissa missed one and Kim and Jessica missed none. And I didn't count it as absent if you came in late because, you know, that happens. So that's out of 46 meetings. We have a councillor who's missed 24% of our meetings, those two meetings that are scheduled with everyone else missing, you know, three or less or none. And then the same thing when you, and I have this, I was going to send it, I have it undocumented because I went in and I checked it. Same thing with special meetings, going into executive sessions. We had eight of those. And again, councillor Bosmans, you missed two of those, which is 25% of our meetings. And Jessica, you missed one. And then finally, in the special sessions, which are things like the city council joint session, the meetings with the DFPD, interviews for the boards and commissions. It doesn't have the URA or the nine hour meetings. I just, based on what we had minutes for, we had 12 of those meetings. And councillor Bosmans missed five, which is a high percentage, it's over 40%. Or over, yeah, over, over 33%, closer to 40. Melissa missed three and Jessica missed two. Again, not anywhere near the same consistency. If you look at all 66 meetings in 2022, councillor Bosmans missed 18 for 27% of meetings missed. The next ones were right in there with, you know, Melissa, Jessica and I all missed meetings. All less than 10, 10, 6 and 3% of the meetings missed with councillor Baxter missing zero. So my concern is if we were evaluating our city appointees, I doubt that we would have anything favorable to say about they're able to do their job when they miss that many meetings. So what I'd like us to consider, this is not to discuss now, is do we need a conversation about what's appropriate number? Recognizing we all have things come up. But some of these meetings, I also want to say were topics of like the reform of the boards and ethics, which, you know, we had two ethics claims filed against each other, against, you know, councillor Bosmans against Kim Baxter and not being at that meeting or the budget vote. And so I would like to have a meeting where we discuss what do we expect of each other? What's an appropriate amount of meetings to attend? And if you're not able to do your job, then what's the appropriate responsibility? Because I do believe that the residents and the community members deserve to have people present, informed and available. And that is part of our responsibility is coming together as a council in this public setting to address these. So I'm not here, these are the facts. You can all go to the minutes and check them. I checked myself throughout three times. And I'm happy to send this out as an email. But I just would like to know, is this something that council believes we need to discuss and address if we have this kind of repeated absences? And what's, what's an appropriate action going forward? I'll open it up. Jessica, you have your microphone on.
I'll just say, I think that that might fit nicely into like the discussion that Kim brought up earlier. I think it fits with, you know, council behavior expectations. And then how we hold ourselves accountable. Is this in? Bill, is this typically in charters? When I was running, a previous council member told me that you could only miss two meetings, but obviously that's not true. I, I didn't know if, is it typically in charters or?
It is partially addressed by your charter at the moment. Charter section, article two, section five describes when vacancies exist. And it provides that an office of the council member is vacant if a council member fails to attend four consecutive regular meetings of the council unless excused by the council. So in, to that extent, it's addressed to the extent that you may have other policies and procedures. I'm not aware of them. It is not uncommon for cities and municipalities to adopt rules that say if you're going to miss more than such a such number of meetings, they have to be excused by the rest of the council. There are other places in which if you don't come to a meeting, you don't get paid. So I, I'm new enough here that I don't know, but I can tell you what your charter provides. If you miss four consecutive regular meetings, the position can be deemed vacant.
Okay, thank you. I support a discussion, maybe tying in with Kim, so we don't have like another separate meeting just about council expectations and consequences and what we want to hold ourselves to for constituents. I mean, they deserve, they elect someone that you show up and you're here for those big decisions. So yes, I support that.
I support it as well.
Yeah, I support it too. And Bill, in my research that I was doing earlier, and I don't remember if it was in the code of conduct or if it was in the, somewhere else. But it does mention, and I believe it's two absences without approval essentially of those city councils. So there is something else in our documentation and I'm not certain exactly where it is. But I support it, the conversation in conjunction with the other conversation.
Councillor Bosmans?
Yes, this is a very interesting study session. It looks to be a full-on attack on me. So I guess I have to lawyer up. What seems to be on, at hand here is a charter, the language in the charter and how you wish to deal with that. So it's, unless you want to make it personal as an attack on me, then which seems to be the case, then I understand to do that, you want to include it with another topic. But this is really a charter issue. And if this council wishes to update charter to address what requirements there are for attendance to meetings, then I am open to have that discussion, but it doesn't seem to be that way. This is more of an excuse to attack on me. And I think what is really missing is one thing is being present and the other one is being engaged and prepared and asked educated questions. So it doesn't matter, whatever.
I'd like to thank you, thank you councillor Bosmans. You used the word attack and I think that's a common thing that you might throw out, but this is not an attack. This is a statement of fact. The fact is you've missed 27% of the meetings and close to, and 20 and and 24% of the city and city council meetings. The question is, it's not an attack. It's a question of what's appropriate and what is an expectation of councillors. I'm calling for a discussion. You've made your point, but I wanted to clarify, once you're accusing of attack, that's a serious accusation. And I for one, do not believe it's the case. I believe it's a statement of what's appropriate and how do we go forward. But thank you. I appreciate your voice. And on that matter, we are 10, 10, five minutes over and I'd like to move on to the next item. Thank you. We do note, Kim, Melissa, I heard you say yes, that you also support this.
Yes, I support it.
Great. I wanted to make that note. And city manager Jose, if you'll look to when to put that on the appropriate agenda, if it's combined, separate issues, it is a concern of mine because I have not seen in my three and a half years on city council, I have not seen any one councillor miss as many meetings as I've seen this past year. Thank you very much. We'll move on. So Jose, I believe you have Devon queued up to speak on the lodgers tax. We are, we are, I was just gonna say, we, you know, I recognize that I had asked if we could cut new business down, and that was not the case this, this week. So I recognize that we will not be taking a ten-minute break, we might take a five-minute break for for, somewhere in this time. But, if you could bring Devin up, and did, Jose, did you want to provide an introduction going into that?
Yes, please, Mayor, I'll, I'll just provide a brief one. This is kind of following along the, the lines of direction in discussion with the city council on the, after finding out the lodgers tax and the, allowing the city to keep the overestimate for workforce affordable housing. I did ask the council for direction if this was something, as we had discussed previously, on reallocation of lodgers tax that we might want to consider for April, knowing that we would have a tight timeframe. We wanted to make sure that, at least specifically for myself, that we didn't get too far in the year, and the council had an expectation of staff that we were working on something and didn't have the time to actually get through. Council did say that they were amenable to having a discussion today in regards to some of the information that we have found out and what we're able to do if there would be a possible discussion about reallocation of lodgers tax. With that, we have Devin Schmidt, our Budget and Strategic Planning Officer. We have Eva Henson, our Housing Innovation Manager. And we also have Lori, and I hope I say this right, Weigle, who did some public outreach into some of the questions that we were going to ask for reallocation of lodgers tax. Again, all of this, just to give the council some information in regards to deciding if this was something in direction that they wanted staff to continue or not. So in that vein, in education, I will pass it over to Devin and let her take this presentation.
Excellent, thank you, Jose, Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer. Give me one moment while I share my screen. And Council, are you seeing the presentation?
It says you started screen sharing, but there's no presentation.
A blank screen.
Blank. Let's see here. Let's try that again. How about now?
I'm just getting a message, Devin, that says you started screen sharing, but it's just black with that message on it.
Okay.
Do you want me to try from my end, Devin?
Sure, Tom, if you want to give that a go.
We can see it now.
Excellent. Tom, are you able to give me control, by chance?
Um, yep, hang on one second.
Thank you. And Mayor and Council, while Tom is figuring that out, I did want to touch base with Council and see for the sake of efficiency and consistency, would it be okay with Council if we get through the presentation and hold questions until the end?
I will honor that request.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, so Mayor and Council, Devin Schmidt, Budget and Strategic Plan Officer, Jose did a good introduction, providing, we're here to provide Council a brief presentation about the possible reallocations, and then we'll turn it over to Lori Weigle with Newbridge Strategies to provide the outcome of the polling. So, let's see here. Sorry about that, I am trying to see if I can change the slide here, and it's not letting me. Tom, we might have to have you change the slide, I apologize, it's not letting me do it on my end.
Right now.
Nothing. Okay, so lodgers tax, so how did we get here? So in November, the over collections of the lodgers tax passed, and the utilization of the over collections were for housing, transportation, arts and culture. At the December sixth regular meeting, Council requested that staff seek community input for a potential lodgers tax relocation. At that point, staff consulted with Newbridge Strategies to survey the community on potential reallocations and potential ballot language. From there to stem, from there, we're, you know, looking at this December to January timeline. Staff worked with Newbridge and also researched several municipalities' ballot languages and what the results of those were. So, as I mentioned, Newbridge will provide Council with the findings of the survey, and we'll talk about some of the current lodgers tax, the possible potential reallocations that were tested through the polling, and we'll go from there. So Newbridge Strategies, we were excited to consult with Lori and her team. Lori did help the city of Durango back in 2005 with polling on the 2005 sales tax reauthorization. And so primarily, Lori and her team focus on polling and ballot measures. So she's polled on behalf of the winning side of ballot measures campaigns in states as well as that vary from Arkansas, Illinois, Oregon, Washington, California, New Jersey, Florida, Maine and Colorado. And in 2018, they had eighteen ballot measures on which she conducted the research, so we're all victorious. So, we're happy to have her as a partner for the city of Durango in this polling. So the current lodgers tax ballot language. So in 2021, the city authorized an authorization to increase the lodgers tax from the two percent to the five percent, or five-point-two-five percent. So this is the current forecasted projections of what lodgers tax will be. So starting with the 2022 funding, all the way through 2033, as it relates today to what those percentage allocations are. When the ballot questions, and Lori will get into greater detail about this, but there was two ballot questions tested for the funding allocation. So half of the participants that were a part of the polling survey saw this lodgers tax potential ballot language. And then the other half will see the next slide as it relates to the conversation. So what staff heard from Council was to look at what the potential options are, knowing that workforce and affordable housing and childcare for local workers was a sort of a gap in funding area for the city of Durango. So this is taking twenty percent from the marketing proposal and moving it into affordable workforce housing and childcare for local workers. The next question that was tested for the other half of the participants was taking thirty-five percent for marketing promotion of sustainable local tourism, and then shifting the other sixty-five percent, so that's the, all of the other buckets, to be one bucket of of funding for workforce housing, for childcare, for local transportation, parking and transit purposes, for arts and cultural events, experiences and programs, and for all other related to the impacts of tourism, as council may determine. So this was the other half of the potential ballot language that participants of the polling survey saw. And so Council can see just the different dollars, figures, if, if those allocations were something that Council wanted staff to prepare. So at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Lori Weigle, and she's gonna take Council through the findings for the polling survey.
Great, thank you, Devin, I appreciate that, what a kind introduction. So I am, I'm shrinking you guys down, so I won't be able to see physical looks on faces. But I, someone stop me if there's a, a place where we need to clarify anything. And then I'm assuming someone will keep the, the slides moving forward.
And Lori, we agreed to, we agreed to allow the full presentation and then bring questions up.
Okay, all right, wonderful, sometimes there's just a point of confusion, so I want to make sure that we don't linger on that. Thank you all very much, and I'll just say, next slide, for whoever's guiding this from, from now on. So if we want to move forward one, let me just tell you a little bit about what we did. We work with, and I'm the principal of Newbridge Strategy, I worked for firms out of Washington DC for over two decades, but have been here in Colorado for the last twenty-five years. And basically, a lot of the work that I do is working with municipalities and counties and special districts for exactly the type of thing that you all are considering, it's like, how do we allocate funding? A lot of times it's an actual increase, but in this case, sort of a reallocation. And what we did was we spoke to representative survey of three hundred residents who are likely to participate in the April election, based on past vote history. And we also include some new residents as well. We do that, it's proportional throughout the city, so we make sure that we're not over-representing one area. We didn't see a lot of regional variations here at all. But we also make sure that it's, that we set some quotas and do a number of things to really ensure that it's represented for this audience by gender and age and a number of other factors. We have gradually, over the years, shifted to making sure that we're not just talking to people via the phone, although we do lots of cell phone interviews in this respect, but also had an email invitation that was sent out, so the people that are the kind that might never pick up their phone could also be included as well. And I know three hundred may not sound like a huge number, but to give you some perspective, we just completed a national survey, that was a thousand voters in order to represent all Americans. So three hundred is our typical sample size, it gives us a margin of error about just under six percent. And I think you're gonna see that some of the guidance that we're providing from, based on what residents told us, is clearly well beyond that margin of error level. So, let's look at just a few things, if you keep going past this one, thank you. We did start out the survey by asking people, this was an open-ended question, so they could literally have said anything, we would have recorded it. And then we took all those responses and categorized them. So we asked them to tell us what's the single most important problem facing the city of Durango, and lots of these slides, the exact question wording is going to be at the bottom of the slide, just as a reference point for you all. But you can see, I mean, there's a, I don't think this will be a shock to anyone here, that housing was at the top of the list. I do work in Summit County and Eagle County and Route County this past, this past election cycle, where we had a number of ballot measures that were successful. Housing is consistently, throughout much of the state, been at the top of the list. Homelessness and the unhoused was about just under a quarter, people volunteering something related to that. And then just under that was concerns about traffic or growth or number of new people moving in. So everything else was in the single digits, it doesn't mean that those things are unimportant or not a concern. But certainly, when we ask people just what's top of mind, really kind of comes down to the issue that we're here to talk about today, which is housing and some of those related issues. So that's clearly sort of dominant here, and we'll see that a couple of times in the presentation. If you go to the next slide, and the next one, we've got some section breaks here. Okay, so what Devin was mentioning, I just want to clarify, so what we do, and more often than not, people are like, well, should we ask for this much in a tax increase or, you know, a lower amount? Or should we fund this or that? So this is a little bit unique, but it's the perfect use of survey research in order to understand how people interpret something and how they respond. So I'm, I'm gonna refer to these, we basically took the sample, broke it into two representative halves. They match each other in terms of core demographics, in terms of political registration, all those types of things. But a hundred and fifty basically respondents heard, but I'm gonna call the specific percentages. And so that's that sort of laundry list, the thirty-five percent for marketing, the twenty percent for housing and childcare, right? I won't read them all to you, you can see them right there. And then we took the other half, and we said, okay, if those were not allocated, you know, if we didn't draw out specific percentage for each of those, instead, if it was sort of, here's one bucket, and then here's the thirty-five percent for marketing and promotion of sustainable local tourism, does that have a different impact on people? Everything else, the beginning is the same, you know, it's not a tax increase, so we want to call that to their intention. We're telling them it's from the existing lodgers tax, and then we're also telling them that the, any funds that are used in here are subject to the normal annual independent audit that's published on the city's website. So everything else is the same, it's basically, and the categories are the same, it's just whether we call out specific percentages or not. So, each one only saw one of these, they weren't comparing and contrasting, so that's an important point too. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go, go to the next one. So, for the half that heard that specific percentages, they're basically evenly divided. What's most important here, and they were asked, okay, let's pretend the election were being held today, this proposal is on the ballot, would you vote yes? And that's sort of the Manchetta column there, or would you vote no, and that's that gray column? Or are you just simply undecided? Well, the important point here is where things are in terms of a yes percent. Because what we tend to see is that those who are somewhat undecided will often hold back and really end up often, more often than not, sometimes end up in the no category when it comes to actually filling out their ballot. So we've got a really clear distinction here, right? So more than a twenty-point gap, if they saw that long laundry list, they were at forty-two percent saying they vote yes. If they saw the sixty-five, thirty-five, the two buckets, they were at sixty-four percent yes. Only eighteen percent no, and another eighteen percent. So it's a pretty dramatic distinction, actually, a lot of times. We'll just see, like I gave you the example of one amount of dollars versus another amount of dollars. More often than not, we won't see any difference at all in terms of how people respond to that. But here, we're seeing a very clear difference. If we move to the next slide, there's a few groups that are often respond more different than not. And you can see, really, it's a thirty-point gap between those who are, I loosely call this, longer-term residents. So those who've lived, told us that they've lived in the community fifteen or more years, was thirty points higher. So those newer residents were fairly supportive of either one of these iterations of the potential proposal, but it was really long-term residents that were far more supportive of that sixty-five, thirty-five split. And there's just another group that I was gonna call out to on the next slide to show you. And renters are, I don't think, shockingly more supportive of either iteration of that. Anytime we're talking about housing, that tends to be the case, but it's really homeowners that were dramatically different in terms of that response. They were far more likely to be supportive of that sixty-five, thirty-five split. And then if you keep going, I think I can explain a little bit about why that was, right? Because seemingly, it should be about the same, we're talking about the same purposes and all of that. But basically, what happened was when they saw that list of items, the biggest percentage, of course, was going to marketing for sustainable local tourism. And people were balking at that, that even though the bulk, if with, if they added it all up, right? It'd still be that same sixty-five to thirty-five proportion. But just because of how it's framed in the ballot, if we give them exact percentages, it feels like more of the funding is going towards promotion of tourism. And they are saying, gosh, we've got other issues, I'd like to see more going to housing. I mean, this is just a handful of responses, a sort of really a good example of what we heard, but there were many people voting no. But there were many people voting no, simply because they did not like more of the funds being categorized for that specific item. Some people certainly were fine with it, but they just didn't want the bulk of, they felt like the bulk of the funds going to that specific item. So it really is sort of a, it's exactly why we do research, to sort of understand how people interpret ballot language and how they interpret uses. And I think it's, uh, giving us a fairly clear guidance on how that more specificity in this case is something that's actually causing a sort of unintended consequence with the electorate that's likely to participate in, in this April election. On the next slide, so we knew that maybe people might lack some, or at least some people might lack some context for this. So we gave them a little bit of an explanation of why they might see this on the ballot and told them about, you know, what they had just voted on in November, for example, just sort of refreshed everyone's memory on that, and told them this proposal voters could consider in April, obviously, may not, but it could, which have more funds from the ongoing lodging tax to these other items, right? So now they've got that context. If you go to the next slide, you can see that does move things up fairly significantly. And so basically, you end up with the people that saw the specific percentages end up, again, not quite as high, though, as the people in the 65-35 split, but still significantly higher, although we're going to see in a second, unfortunately, that doesn't last. So if you go to the next slide, we also wanted to break it apart essentially into pieces here and say, okay, let's give them, and these were all randomized, so they were hearing this in completely different orders. But let's give them some potential purposes. Now, some of these are fairly similar, you're going to see a few of these that have asterisks. Again, we took the sample, broken into a slightly different, uh, split sample, and asked, asked a few of these in a slightly different way. So we didn't define what we meant by any of these terms, it's however they interpret them. But it's something that, you know, we had this reviewed by council, that's something that could appear on the ballot. And obviously, many of these are deemed important by the electorate. They were able to tell us for each one, is that something that's extremely important, very important? If we combine the extremely and very, you get the, the horizontal bar there with the number in black at the end. And they could also say, or is it somewhat important? That's the total column at the end there. Or simply not very important to ensure funding is dedicated for that particular purpose. And so I think we clearly see, it's not that it's completely unimportant, but it's a bare majority in a very much lower category at the bottom of the slide there. The marketing and promotion of sustainable local tourism, people are telling us that in those open-ended comments, they said things like, Durango sells itself, we don't really have to market it, you know, people come here. We almost want fewer people to come here, some, some thought, not everyone certainly, but some voice that opinion. And at the top of the list in contrast is, uh, uh, housing for local workers. The childcare, not that far behind, actually fairly significantly. Two-thirds saying that's extremely or very important, nine in 10 saying that's at least somewhat important. There was an interesting article in today's Colorado Sun about childcare in mountain communities, so. But, uh, local, you know, again, on transportation, we framed it a couple of different ways. Seeing as for local roads and bridges was really top of the list, but local transit, when we, especially when we explained it reduced reliance on vehicles. Again, solid majority saying that these are extremely or very important. And certainly, the vast majority saying that, uh, at least all but one are at least somewhat important. So I think we've got, though, you know, obviously, when you have things in the 90s versus things in the 50s, it tells you it's just sort of a difference in priorities, so kind of helpful to keep in mind as we think about what might be funded. And then just a couple more points on the next slide. We did ask them, we told them $2 million in lodging tax, lodger's tax was collected for the purposes of marketing and promotion of sustainable local tourism. And if it were up to them, would we be spending more, which is a mere 1%, so they would spend more, less or about the same amount? A lot of times, people revert to the status quo. So it's actually quite striking that three-quarters said that they would spend less, and it sort of reinforces what, what we heard in terms of how people are responding. So this is definitely in line with the direction that you guys are considering. You know, residents are very much in line with that. And then on the next slide, sorry. We did give them some pros and cons. We wanted to sort of simulate some of the conversation that might take place. This is not a comprehensive list. We have a limited amount of time we can spend with people, but certainly, we gave them a few different rationales, why someone might support this proposal and want to vote yes in favor of the measure, whichever one they had seen. Certainly, all of these, usually, we're looking for 35%, very convincing to say, wow, that's something that could be, you know, sort of, uh, communicated to residents and people would really respond to that. All three of these rationales are heads and tails above that. So this is, again, a lot of times where people are not quite as in line with what you guys are planning to do in other communities sometimes. So this is, uh, very clearly they're responding, these are all very resonant. And then on the next slide, you can see the, in contrast, some of the reasons why someone might not vote for this are, are not very convincing at all, only 12% saying that that top one is very convincing, or 11%, these are just well below the 35% very convincing level that we would ever see. So people are just not pushing back at this at all, they're, they're continuing to say, well, we're allocating some funds. This is, you know, appropriate. And if you go to the next slide, so what we did after they heard those pros and cons was we wanted to make sure, like, okay, where did they end up after hearing a lot more and being some of the best informed, other than folks on this call today, about what you guys might consider in the future? So I'm showing you this still split in half, because remember, the, the initial response to that specific percentages and allocating everything out very exact, in a very exacting manner, you know, started out below the critical 50% threshold. We were able to shift that, with just a quick explanation of that. But once they saw that again and responded to it again, they reverted back to form. So even though they had a lot more context in terms of the fact that we're moving dollars away, they still stayed in that place where they were skeptical at best of, of that very specific percentages. In contrast, the folks that saw the 65-35 split were more likely to, you know, consistently stayed well above that critical 50% threshold. So were you to move forward, it would clearly be our recommendation that we would opt for that sort of, you know, ballot language. And lots of times, specificity is important and it's helpful for people to see. But I think unwittingly, it is provoking a response that says to people that the priorities listed for the lodger's tax are not in line with where they ideally would see them. It also obviously gives some flexibility to take advantage of opportunities that might happen in the future. But it's clearly sort of a, an interesting test case here for how people respond to that, that level. But certainly, were it to be that 65-35 bucket, it's quite well positioned, I think, to be, to be something that would be supported. So, and I think.
Lori, is that the finish of your questions?
Yeah, I think.
Is that, is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, ma'am, I think there may be a couple framing slides for.
And I do believe before we, we go through, I do believe the presentation also involves something from Eva, is that correct? Okay, Devin, I, I am honoring your request. And I am seeing that hands are raised, so we will come back. I want to make certain we allow enough time. And Jose, I will give notice that if need be, I would like to make certain we have a full round of every counselor having at least one question answered, and we'll go in cycles, once we hear from housing. And then, uh, an advance notice that we may need to cut short the second half of the study session. So I'm going to, because of, of the request, I'm going to, Eva, are you set to, to present your issues?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Hi, good afternoon. Eva Henson, the Housing Innovation Manager, was really excited to be part of this collaboration with, you know, departments, as well as bringing on a consultant to sort of look at our community and what those needs might be, identified through the survey results. As you know, there are several different studies and reports that exist for the city of Durango. The first I wanted to bring to the forefront would be the city of Durango's housing plan that was adopted in 2018, as well as the Root Policy Needs Analysis Assessment Report that was published in September of 2021. And then the most recent report, the three-year workforce housing investment strategy that was published in June of 2022. And all three of those identified that dedicated funding sources for affordable housing are needed. And of course, that's why we're here today. The strategic plan for the city also has identified in the affordability and economic opportunity goals for the division to examine different revenue sources to maximize housing creation, which include the fair share program as well as possible dedicated tax revenue streams. Ultimately, dedicated funding sources will enable a housing pipeline for workforce and affordable housing by providing matching funds for grants, leveraging for attracting state and federal grants, as well as loans, or fund to defray costs for developers of qualified projects that entail workforce and affordable housing units. Locally, housing is not the only critical need, buying for local money, as Durango will always have multiple funding demands. Therefore, it is important for the city to continue to seek additional dedicated funding streams specifically to fund affordable housing. So this slide, what I wanted to demonstrate to council is several opportunities identifying those challenges and where are those potential uses that we could use funding, potentially that was dedicated from a source for affordable housing. As you know, the fair share and transfer fees are one of the sources for revenue for the housing division. We also have used temporary ARPA funds currently covering those division costs this year within the budget so that we can allow the fair share and the transfer fees to accumulate. Some of the challenges, though, that the division faces are those fees are inadequate to meet the needs to address the affordable housing for this community. Revenue is unstable and difficult to forecast. Non-renewable funds projected to be exhausted by the end of 2024, there is a cliff effect for the ARPA money and possibly unable to bond for large projects. On the flip side, what can we do if we had dedicated revenue streams for housing? Potential uses and opportunities I see could be covering pre-development work to fast-track priority housing projects, designing and constructing infrastructure to achieve multiple benefits, including housing production. We can look to offset development costs in exchange for long-term workforce housing units, preserving existing naturally occurring affordable housing, as well as expanding current partnerships and programs. And all of those uses on this slide, I would say the division has successfully tried to achieve many of those in this first year of implementation for the division, as well as my position. Next slide. So I wanted to sort of break it down. The Root Policy Needs Analysis Assessment identifies sort of near-term, looking at the next three to five years. What would that entail to sort of start to addressing the affordable housing needs within La Plata County? In this slide, it was hard to kind of compact and put all of the information in here. But they divided into three categories, rentals for low-wage jobs, which primarily are at or below 60% AMI. And in 2021, the two-person household would need to be earning around $42,000 and less to, to sort of identify and meet that, that targeted area meeting income. For moderate wage jobs, often I would identify that in a range of anything from 60% AMI to 120% area meeting income. And in 2021, that 120% salary for a two-person household was about $84,000. So here, identifying and addressing those needs on an average annual basis, we would need to be building about 310 units a year specifically targeting these three buckets. And so if I broke it down with the subsidies that were identified in the three-year workforce investment strategy, just again, to try and simplify this. If we targeted 232 units on that low-wage earner job category, rents below $625 a month, 232 units for $72,000 potential subsidy gap, it would take approximately over $16 million in the next three to five years to start to really at-scale target that range of rental development. Again, a snapshot, if we were looking at rentals in that moderate wage job, again, 60% area meeting income to 120% area meeting income for 111 units at a $75,000 subsidy gap a unit, it would approximately take over $8 million to achieve that. And if we really focus on ownership, and again, moderate wage jobs for sale product in a range of $380,000 to $525,000 sale point for a list price of 111 units, the study identified that $200,000 a unit, potentially to, to bring that price point down to that, along with the development cost, would possibly take $22 million. Next slide. I also wanted to identify, what is the housing innovation doing? How are we strategically tackling the housing crisis that I, again, is complex, it's multifaceted? And our current approach is to encourage and incentivize a wide variety of housing types through a diverse mix of programs and policies over the long term. So that's 2022 and beyond. How would we use funding, again, to tackle some of the housing needs for this community? First and foremost, partnerships, programs, and funding. Those are the three key buckets that I focus on, and the division and the team focus on here in community development on a daily basis. That being said, if you break those down, it entails new housing development, adaptive reuse, preservation of existing housing stock, also housing policy and code, housing programs, additional land acquisitions and potentially a land banking program. Other funding sources will continue to look for other ways to, to achieve some of the council's strategic goals for affordable and workforce housing units in this community through grants, through federal funding, through additional partnerships. But also, the key takeaway for this slide is the division needs a consistent local revenue source so that we can plan accordingly to tackle this long term. And I think that ends it for my housing slides.
Just wanted, oh, I apologize, mayor.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, perfect. So I just wanted to, again, remind council of the timeline. If council decides to put this on an April ballot. So in December, we met with council, there's already been a notification of the county election for the council seats. We are at January 17th, so lodger's tax discussion, we're having that today. The February 7th meeting is, would be the deadline to certify the ballot language. And then April 4th, should council decide to put this as a ballot question for reauthorization, this would come to the next regular city council meeting. So just a reminder of what, what staff is looking for, should staff prepare a resolution to certify the ballot language on the February 7th city council regular meeting? And if so, should there, what allocation should staff utilize? So that concludes our presentation, mayor and council. And I can stop sharing, or if we need to leave it up to reference any slides, happy to do so.
Why don't you stop? And if we need to, sharing, if you need to pull it up. What I'm going to do is I'm going to focus first round of questions. These counselors are limited to one question, and we'll keep, we'll go around. And I'd like to focus first on Lori's presentation. And I'll be looking for hands raised, and I'll call on you again. One question each, we'll start with that round, and please make it in the form of a question. Let me see if there's any hands raised. Olivia, I see you have a hand raised, thank you. Please go ahead, this is a question for Lori.
Hi there, thank you for the presentation, all of you. I have a very specific question that I want to ask first, and then I'll leave it to the other counselors to answer questions, and then. and then I'll leave it to the other counselors to answer questions, and then I have some more questions and comments. This is a specific question to the consultant, Lori Weigle. And in both options, there has been 20% removed from the marketing, sustainable market events allocation and going to housing or to the combined allocation, including housing. Can you tell me very clearly where that 20% number came from and who was involved in that discussion?
So I think that's probably less of a question for me, more of a question for for the staff.
So you were provided with that number. Who who in the staff came up with that number and who was involved in in that discussion?
Counselor Bosmans, if I may, the staff team, and you'll see Jared has also jumped on here. So we had a staff team that included the city attorney, the public information office. We had finance involved, budget team was involved, community development was involved, transportation, as well as community development for two reasons. One is arts and culture and two is the workforce potential. We also included Public Works Group in that conversation. And so when staff met, we were working to determine how do we accomplish what council is looking to do? And Jared was nice enough to run some numbers for us. So Jared, I don't know if you want to speak about that now as it relates to the 20% that was allocated from marketing to the housing piece.
Jared, it looks like he's frozen.
He does. Looks like we lost Jared and he may be joining back in.
I think we lost him. Let's let's come back to that. Are there other, and we'll retain that question and get the final explanation. But thank you for listing the full team that was involved in that allocation. And we didn't necessarily go into into why, but we'll come back to that. Other questions of Lori, one question at a time, counselors, please. If not, I'll, I have a question, but I'll wait for others. Okay, Lori, my question, I don't see any other hands raised. Lori, my question was, when you were writing the proposed decisions, did you explain that currently 55% is allocated to marketing and that this would be a reduction? And if not, would you consider doing that and would that influence the the decisions?
So in the initial language, we worked with the city attorney and we sought some outside counsel as well on that to frame it in order to meet what the legal requirements would be. And so obviously, as you guys know, there's not a whole lot of explanation in those, unfortunately. Some of them seem to beg for, beg for more explanation. But that's when we did what we called a sort of plain language explanation. We followed up after they told us, yeah, I I would vote yes or I would vote no for that. Then we said, then we told them currently, most of the lodgers' tax visitors pay for hotels or short-term rentals, funds advertising, marketing for tourism. We sort of put it in layman's language. I don't think we specifically said 55%. We told them in November, voters approved a one-time investment of lodging tax funds. So it was that that language that we showed on the screen there. Mostly to housing for local workers along with these other purposes. This proposal voters could consider in April would shift more fronts from ongoing lodging taxes to housing for local workers, transportation, the arts with less funding for tourism marketing. So we didn't say 55%, but basically we tried to provide that context. That's again, when when people were supportive of that in in concept. But again, when we went back to them with the final language and reminded them of that language, they sort of reverted back to where they kind of started initially. So it really does demonstrate how powerful that ballot language and what we have to put in front of people really is and sort of eliciting a response.
Thank you. I want to see if any other Melissa, Kim, or Jessica have questions for Lori. And I do believe Jared is maybe back on and able to provide some of the backup to Counselor Bosman's question.
Jared's frozen again, it looks like. So he logs back in or not.
Good. Melissa, I see your microphone is on. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I just was, my biggest question was, but you know, Lori answered it for me, so thank you so much. It was, I just could not get my head around why there would be so much more support for the 65-35 split and the unspecified large bucket versus the specified. Like, I always thought that people would want more specificity such that they knew what would be happening with the funds. So I was really surprised by that, but you answered my question in suggesting that it was just that that breakdown, that they're seeing the 35, you know, being higher than the others. So, you know, I I just, you know, for for a long time, I kept looking and looking at your report, trying to get that figured out, just saying, why, but why would that be? So, you know, the only thing I could say, though, to that is that it seems, you know, as one, as one counselor, I liked the specificity because I liked knowing that they were going to specific buckets. Arts and culture, transportation, so important as well. And I liked knowing that. And I did note that, you know, in your performance or in your presentation, that with more information, those percentages did change, but I just found that just really actually very interesting.
I think
unusual.
I I think too, sometimes we'll see is, you know, working with counties and municipalities and districts, sometimes there is a percentage allocated, but it's not in the actual ballot language. It's in the accompanying, you know, resolutions and some of those materials. So it's not as if you have to, quote unquote, abandon it completely in terms of being able to, you know, have whatever specific allocation you desire and put some, you know, sort of guardrails on it, I guess. It's just that I think in the actual language, it it comes across as allocating more to something that they're, you know, clearly, they told us they feel it's less important right now.
Where are you, where are you saying that we could specify that more carefully?
I know there's usually a company, there's an accompanying resolution or there's, you know, and again, I'm not an attorney, I don't even play one on TV. But so, so there's probably other people better equipped to answer that. But but, you know, we have seen cases where people are like, okay, well, we can include these stipulations, but it's not, it doesn't go into the actual words that are on the ballot question.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. But that's very helpful to understand because there has been also some feedback that council has received from, you know, individuals that have worked very heavily to support other areas of this tax, such as arts and culture, and wanting to ensure that that funding still remains in place. And so there is definitely some concern out there by by making that switch to just a large, big bucket as well. So.
I'm gonna, thank you. I'm gonna actually keep us moving. I do appreciate the question and and Lori, I appreciate the the options that of ways of putting in guardrails. I see Jessica has her microphone off, so I wanted to provide an opportunity for her to ask a question. Please again, make certain that we're asking in the form of a question. Thank you.
I'll just be really quick. I just want to thank you, Lori Devon, Eva, for all your work in putting this presentation together and some initial legwork with the potential reallocation for the lodger tax to discuss. I appreciate the steps, Lori, that you and your company take. And if we decide to go after the relocation, reallocation, I feel like this maybe in more depth and with some more tweaks will substantially be helpful. I think it truly shows how education and information is so necessary as we look at this. But you did answer almost all of my questions, and so I don't have anything further.
Great. Counselor Bosmans, I do see your hand, but I want to turn to Counselor Baxter with an opportunity to ask a question.
Once we're done with asking questions of the consultant Dan with Devon and staff, will there be time for discussion among the city councilors?
Absolutely. That's why I'm keeping us moving. That's my hope. So I'm trying to keep it in the form of questions. Thank you.
So I say thank you also, but other than that, no.
Counselor Bosmans, do you have a question for Lori? And I also want to recognize that Jared Biggs looks like he's back on.
Yeah, I think, let's move along. I am, so we have collected more lodgers' tax than anticipated. And as a result, the dollar value allocation to sustainable tourism and marketing, as well as the other allocations is higher than initially anticipated when the tax increase passed. But it's important to remember that the lodger's tax increase was approved in 2021 by a majority. Need a slim majority, but majority nonetheless. And equally important is that the city's lodger's tax policy was only approved in January last year.
Do you have a question, please? Is there a question? Is there a question of Lori? Because we'll go into comments on this later, but if there's a question, I'm trying to have those questions answered.
Can I continue?
Yes, as long as you please put it in the form of a question rather than a statement.
So it was approved in, the policy was approved in January 2022, so barely a year, and even less time for the implementation. So do you believe it would be good to better understand if these current taxes and spending are having its desired and effect? And how long do you typically see other communities take to see the impacts of a certain tax before making changes to those taxes?
Lori, do you have an opinion on that? And as a statistician, and as a statistician, you may not.
Well, I I think we tried to frame that all out in the in the plain language explanation that I talked about to tell them, provide some context and tell them what happened just in last November and all that. I think that voters are pretty clear in terms of their priorities for where funding should be allocated. And so I don't know that it's a a timing issue so much as a as a wanting to ensure that the the top issues that they told us were most important for the city are are being addressed. So I I think that typically what we see is that people want, they want responsiveness in in government and and sort of less delay typically is what we see. So I, but again, it's a hypothetical that that's hard to answer.
Thank you, Lori. I'm now going to open it up for questions on Eva. I'm going to go again, ideally one round. I do anticipate this is probably the most important discussion we've had. And I will, as I gave, pose a warning, continue this discussion until I felt like we've reached a had a chance to raise our questions and reached and raised questions and talked among council about this issue. This is now open for questions of Eva. Counselor Bosmans.
So thank you. And thank you, Eva, for that presentation on housing. And we all know housing is a key topic for our community. And I need, I needed no survey to confirm this, and pretty much everybody in our community is aware of it. So I'll come to a question, Madam Chair. There is no clear analysis of what our revenues are for housing, such as under the Fair Share Ordinance, and what we have done, physically done with that money. I had requested the breakdown of actual revenues associated with housing, such as the fee and lieu transfer fees and dollar equivalent value in case affordable units were added or waived fees. And and my question, one of my questions is, will I still receive that information? I think our community would be maybe not that impressed to learn how much money already goes to housing and how little I believe we actually do with it. It seems our efforts on housing may actually be obstructing housing development with the fair share order as well as the land use development code, fees and permits, and so on. So.
Oh, Counselor Bosmans, you're asking for information to be supplied to. Is that the question?
I'm, so there's another question coming.
We're starting with one question going around, so I I will take that as your first question.
And my next question is, if if you can just confirm for the record here, so our community is aware. Last year, I believe we had over a thousand, a thousand housing unit, units in various stages of design to construction, and that it currently is about 2,000 units, and that the actual completion of housing units within city limits in 2021 was only 97 units and in 2225 units. Is that also correct?
Eva, I'm going to ask you to answer the first question first, hold the second question, because I see other council members have their hands up. So the first question is related to housing information being supplied. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Counselor Bosmans. Let's see. So the transfer fees, yes, it is on staff's list to provide to council. Sort of that snapshot, right? What's been collected? And how are we expending that money towards housing? One of the things that I have provided to city council is fair share fee and lose. And often those have been earmarked to homes fund. And so annually, as part of my reporting that I provided in January of 2022, I included that in the report for the Annual Housing Division. What was accumulated, what was calculated and taken in and collected? And then how was that spent back out in the community in regards to homes funds programs, in particular for down payment assistance? So the fee and lieu has not been typically utilized for anything else other than homes fund and their down payment assistance program. The transfer fees for Three Springs and Twin Buttes has been a process to reconcile. Part of that has been that those funds, when they were collected, were put into GL accounts into the general fund. So now we have a housing division. We've been working with finance and budget to put those into the housing division so that I can provide a true report, what's been collected, and then therefore, how are we expending it? So it's complicated. It hasn't been an easy process for me to just get to that number. I also have worked with the Three Springs team to reconcile their account. I've reconciled the fair share fee and lieu account through going through manually, through all of these various ways to calculate it manually with spreadsheets. So I have those two numbers. And now I'm working with Twin Buttes to reconcile back from 2017 forward. Three Springs was the same. Those fees didn't start getting collected until 2017. The same with Twin Buttes. And so they weren't getting collected back when those those areas were annexed in back in 2009. So it took quite some time for those fees to start being generated. Also, the variability, those fees are generated when a sale transaction occurs on either a vacant lot or a house, which is why there's that ebb and flow as well. So hopefully, I can get you those numbers with my annual report and look forward to providing that in more context.
Thank you. I also think it needs to be very clear of council. We are not in a position to evaluate the housing department today. That is a function of the city manager. So the, an analysis of our opinion of their performance, I don't believe is necessarily appropriate at this time. Counselor Baxter, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you. Eva, I was wondering if we had an idea of, oh, I know council hasn't really talked about this, and maybe this is something we need to talk about. How many housing units should we be trying to incentivize every year and bring online every year that are in the attainable, affordable workforce housing range? And I know you, so part of this is kind of a convoluted question, but the, you had information from the report that was done, the strategy funding and the root policy about the funding gap. And I've, that's a little bit problematic, and I don't think everybody quite understands it. I'm not going to ask you to explain it, but I'm just wondering, over a 10-year time period, you know, how many units should we be bringing on each year? We have a backlog of approximately 2,500 units and we're, in order to keep up with growth, we should be developing at least 250 general units a year, and we're nowhere near that. So we're getting further and further behind all the time. and we're nowhere near that. So we're getting further and further behind all the time. So what I'm asking is, if, how much money a year do we really need to be putting into housing? Is it two point five million? Is it three point five million? Is it five million over ten years? Is it fifty million? What would move the needle, given the experience of other communities? What do we need to provide you with, with dedicated funding? And I know we'll be talking about this in our retreat. We'll be talking about what projects do we want to work on, what magnitude of funding? And then how do we fund it? And that's kind of what I'm asking is, what's the magnitude of funding here that we really need?
Eva, please answer that.
You, you may not have an answer for that right now.
Yeah, I mean.
Have you bring that to us at another time?
Yeah, I, I would, I would welcome doing that, you know, and certainly in anticipation of your upcoming retreat. I think there's been discussion with council in the past around the, the goal that was in the housing plan of a thousand units by twenty forty and potentially looking at that and, and looking at how, what's realistic? What, where can we start to do some things at scale and start to identify a goal? One of the personal goals, I think, when I came on board was to bring on two hundred units for affordable and attainable work, attainable workforce by twenty thirty. Just, you know, to start to, to just hone in on how could we start to, to, to move that needle? And so if we started to look at that and depending on if we were targeting a spectrum, which we are, we want various unit types, we need rental, we need ownership, we need stepping stones to get folks in. It would take a little more analysis for me to pinpoint exactly what I think we would need funding wise. What I can say is we've been working within the means that city council has provided to the division. So in twenty twenty two, the division used five hundred thousand dollars for housing incentive monies to start to secure those units. We were successfully, successfully able to secure thirty four units with five hundred thousand dollars working within our means, right? Getting creative, getting innovative, working with partnerships, navigating that, working through financial stack complexities to get those units. As we head into twenty twenty three, we increased that funding to eight hundred thousand dollars. So if I start to think about long term, I would like to come back with a, with a more targeted number. That's okay.
I would really.
Okay.
I think it's going to be critical to our success in, in moving the needle on housing. Thank you.
I do too. And I think to Counselor Bosman's question too of, well, where have we, you know, contributed to projects? Where have we done fee offsets or where have we done land leases to help support some of these projects? I think if I go a couple of years back, it's a little more readily available for me to do that. If I try and look from, you know, the beginning of nineteen seventy eight forward, I don't think we would achieve much, right? Because we know construction costs, land acquisitions, all of those things have been exasperated. So to me, kind of going back five years seems a little more realistic for that. And I'd like to bring that back to council possibly at the retreat.
Eva, thank you.
Going forward is more productive than just reviewing the past also. Thank you.
Eva, thank you. I know that there's more information desired. I am cognizant of the time and I'm also very much aware that you'll be giving us an annual report. You'll be clarifying questions about number of units and dollar amounts, and I look forward to that report. What I'd like to do now, unless there's questions of Devon, and I do know that Jared Biggs is back on, but I want to, I'm not certain he's still able to speak. And I really, what I'd like to do now is really give council a chance to chat. This is not to say your position on where we're at, because I actually think we learn from listening to each other. It's really just to give some first thoughts on this report, the findings that Lori presented to us and just some of the, some of what we've learned. And I'll open it up and I particularly want to welcome both Jessica and Melissa, who didn't speak this last round, if they had wanted to start, or I'll welcome from anyone. Again, I'm not looking for a full statement. I'm looking at just response to this report. Thank you. Jessica, please go ahead.
Okay. Um, I'll start with just some tidbits here as to like what I'm initially thinking. And then we can kind of go around and I can further develop. As for, I appreciate all the work that went into the presentation and it was interesting to see as the questions changed, how the respondents supported it and didn't support it. And again, I think as we move forward and potentially look at this more in depth, I think this will be a great tool for us. But as for now, I still stand behind what I've previously said, that I think this is too early to have a real allocation of a lodger's tax that passed less than two years ago and that we've only been implementing and spending from for a year. I, I do feel like we've had groups from our lodging community, arts and culture, community, transportation, the city, all work for that ballot that passed in twenty twenty one. And I think that we owe it to those groups in our community to see these allocations come to fruition, like after COVID. So, you know, we had COVID and then we had our, you know, great rebound. But what do our lodger's tax numbers look like this year and next year? Like how much money is actually going into each pot? I don't want to like jump the gun and I am a fan of the things that council has put into place. The Destiny Nation Management Master Plan, I, you know, I want to see that finished. I want to see, you know, with sustainable tourism marketing, which we've asked as a Drango and they focused on, you know, it allows for smarter growth and lessons impact on the area. We have not been able to see and realize the effects the shift has been having. And I, I, I just kind of want more time, I think. And so I'm going to start there and then I have more, but we'll just talk amongst ourselves.
Thank you for being, thank you for being cognizant of others' needs. I appreciate it. And appreciate you going first. Thank you. I see Melissa, your microphone is on.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. I am going to not share all of my positions right now, like as you've suggested. But one of the things I do want to share as liaison to the Chamber of Commerce for, during a Chamber of Commerce is that I, I, I think some of us may have seen their letters that we received today. And I just wanted to reiterate for the public that, you know, it is the position of the Chamber of Commerce that just, I just want to quickly summarize some of the meetings that we had today. Because I think it's important for you to hear that, you know, they actually don't want to see the city do what they call a quote unquote knee jerk reaction. They, in their opinion, the voters have voted. The chamber and the chamber board recognizes that the lodger's tax does promote sustainability. The, they, they pointed out and had a long discussion about the only reason that our economy even survived COVID was tourism. So they recognize that the real issue is affordability and cost of housing. But by reducing tourism, in their opinion, it does not solve anything. It doesn't, it does not help housing. So they just kind of reiterated, and I want to reiterate here for a moment, that tourism is a very important industry to our community. And they also suggested that it hasn't had a chance to work and we have not had the significant enough of an opportunity to analyze whether it is working. So they, you know, and they also brought up the point that in their opinion, that housing needs to go to the people with the bigger ask. And I have heard that from other strategic leaders in the community as well. So they, they just wanted to really reiterate and I wanted to share that with you here for consideration as we all go around and share our opinions that in their opinion, we, we, we stand to lose a lot by losing our tourists. And I just wanted to go on the public record for, for their position because I do think that representing our businesses as well is important. So I just wanted to start with that if I can.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Kim or Olivier, any thoughts? And then I'll throw in mine.
Well, I, so I've been thinking about this a lot and I kind of think we're going about this backwards because we're discussing each of the individual taxes. We discussed two thousand and five, we're discussing lodger's tax. There could be a dedicated sales tax, as Melissa just mentioned specifically for housing. And personally, I think it would be much more productive and much more impactful to our quality of life in our community if we started with the question, what two or three major things do we want to fund as a council to move forward with? And if one of them's housing, I'm all for that, as you all know. It could be transportation. It could be, there could be eight or ten things that could come to the top and then we'd have to choose maybe two or three. So once we look at that, then we say, what's the magnitude of funding? And this goes to the question I just asked Eva. What's the magnitude of funding necessary for each one of those initiatives to be successful? And to do what we want them to accomplish? So if we determine that initiative A needs twenty million dollars over ten years, initiative B needs, you know, however many millions of dollars or tens of thousands or whatever it is, then we have a real framework for deciding how do we fund it? And that's the question that we come to with these taxes, is that's, that's how do we fund it? But unless we know what it is we want to fund, I'm not certain we can be successful at, at deciding that. So the lodger's tax may or may not be the right vehicle for funding housing. The two thousand and five tax may or may not be the right vehicle for funding parks and rec. The, you know, whatever other tax we have may or may not be the right vehicle for funding, whatever else it is. So personally, when we get to our retreat and we sit down and we talk about what are the big issues? What are the big initiatives that we want to be successful with, top two or three? What's the magnitude of funding for them, top two or three? Then how do we fund it? Because it doesn't matter what form the tax takes, as long as we're funding the things that we need to be funding and we're being successful with it. So that's my take on it. You're on mute, Barbara.
Sorry, Jessica, I, did you just take your hand down?
Well, I just was, I, I agree with Kim. And I think Melissa and I actually, in the study session when this originally got brought up, we had said that that's exactly what we wanted to do, but this sort of got pushed in front of us because of the timing of things, if I remember correctly. But yes, I, and that's sort of like, I don't want a knee jerk reaction or just to like change something without knowing everything. But I totally agree with you, Kim.
Okay, thank you. I see Olivier, I see you have your hand raised, thoughts? And then I would also like to chime in.
Yes, thank you. I, I don't have to have multiple moments to respond to this topic here. First, regarding the presentation, there's only been two options included and that seems to be not enough or maybe not well substantiated. I think our community will benefit from a structural source of revenue that is clearly dedicated to each use, so marketing, but also transportation and transit, as well as the arts and culture, instead of having these subject to changes of opinions and desires from future counselors. In my opinion, the discussion of reallocation of the lodger's tax needs thorough community feedback, as was the case when the initial lodger's tax increase took place in twenty twenty one. And it's equally important to understand what revenues have been collected, forecasted for any potential use, as well as their actual and forecasted expenses that applies to marketing as they might, that maybe they need less. But it's equally true for housing finances, which I would like to see before making any recommendation or position. So at, at this point, my, 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 I guess, as one counselor, is to ask again for that solid financial data clearly presented, past years and forecasted, to understand where additional funding is needed, what we intend to do with it, have more thorough community engagement, have more time to understand the effects of the current lodger's tax and spending, and ultimately have an educated discussion later this year or next year on the lodger's tax allocations and a potential change in ballot.
Thank you. I'd just like to say a few words, some in response, just some of my own thinking. I will remind council that last year, and the city manager, last year at our retreat, which I believe was in February, we talked about the need for a full understanding of all of the issues that were before us, housing, infrastructure, transportation, and what would those sources of funding be? And I'm very hopeful that a year later, we will reach some kind of roadmap at our February retreat. I'd like to say that, I think you all know, I voted, I was the sole vote on the last council against the lodger's tax, not because I didn't support having a lodger's tax, I wholly did. I believe that too much was going to marketing, the tourism. Fifty five percent was more than I thought was necessary. And I think it's important to recognize that in, and Melissa, I appreciate you asking this question. In twenty nineteen, Visit Drango was paid eight hundred and sixty two thousand. That's just out of city resources. And the budget for twenty twenty two was one point six five million, one point six, one, one million, six hundred and fifty thousand. You have to add in an additional close to nine hundred thousand dollars provided from the county, from their sales tax. So I think that's the number I, I checked on it. But, so that's two and a half million dollars. And the question is, is that enough? Or do we have to just keep giving everything you've got? And, and I want to know what we're doing with it. My concern is that, yes, I have heard from businesses and I walked downtown. And I'd also like to say that I also believe what kept businesses afloat was the incredible support from the community and the county during COVID. They shopped downtown, they bought restaurant coupons, they took, ordered takeaway. They, in those dark, marched through this thing, kept supporting local businesses. So I want to really recognize the locals and the county that did that, folks in the county. I also want to recognize that three hundred interviews, we're not getting letters from those folks, but that is a statement about what they think we as a council should be prioritizing. I'd also like to add that I've received calls and my, a couple of them were, I don't have time to write you. I'm, I'm working two and a half jobs just to get by. And do I want to, and also I can't get a dinner reservation because there aren't people working as it is. So I, I, I am concerned that there is a willingness, as, as determined in the previous election and in this survey, for people to allow city councilors, ours and future, more use of these funding and more determination of what could be used. And I think that's a strong statement. It doesn't, and I also recognize that council determination, if this were to go forward and have reduced dedication of funding going to, to marketing, that doesn't mean that council can't decide to put money toward it with an appropriate idea. I recognize that housing is going to need much more. But I also want to say that, you know, the other three that I think are really valued, valuable, I think, transportation. We could put, we got a, a note that said, you know, we have two million dollars in needs to build state, uh, places for people to sit while they're waiting for the transit or to be covered from a store. I believe the arts are vibrant and I also believe that the council determination is important. So if it might not be housed, and I believe, like Melissa, like you, I believe that there's merit in being specific because I think that holds us accountable. So for me, I believe that here's an opportunity, an opportunity to, to realign with the community, what I'm hearing them say, in the sense that this may be too much for marketing. We have other options and I would support an increase to the other three if we were committed to finding a dedicated source for housing, if not this spring election by, by the November election. So that's, that's my preliminary thinking is I, I think we have an opportunity right now and I don't see it as a knee jerk reaction. We've been talking about this for some time, almost nine months. And so we haven't had a presentation, but it has been on the, the topic. So I'll open it back up for other thoughts, any responses to anything anyone said. And, and I appreciate, let me add that I appreciate everyone speaking their mind and their initial thinking. And that's our goal, is to get some sense of, of direction for staff. So any, any thoughts in response to what anyone has said? Thank you, Melissa.
I think that I've really struggled a lot with this decision today or even just with this discussion today, because like so many of you mentioned, the fact that we have not yet had the opportunity to look holistically at all of our funding sources. And also I struggle with it because I'm looking at a couple of different data points from our constituents, such as the community survey and the last election in November, in which voters overwhelmingly supported the in. and the last election in November, in which voters overwhelmingly supported the, in, having the, uh, city spend, the increase in lodger's tax, the over, the excess amount of lodger's taxes on housing, transportation and parking and arts and culture, and that went, that passed by 61%. So that's another data point in my mind. I also have heard from many of my friends and colleagues and constituents who have made it very clear to me that their individual perspective is that they see our city, if you will, I'll be very open about this, becoming just kind of overrun by tourists and they are feeling like they can't get in to their restaurants anymore. And they feel like the, you know, that they don't want to be another Telluride, Aspen or Prestidute. And they're very concerned about it and they're concerned about the increases in funding that we're spending towards marketing. So I'm hearing that on the one hand. In contrast with the conversation I had with the Chamber of Commerce this morning, um, and their perspective from a business standpoint, which from an economic and financial standpoint, of course, I understand that as well. And we're in a difficult position here as counselors because we represent our constituents and of course, we're very, we have to have the success of our businesses. So it's this catch 22 that I find myself in today that I am in, I, 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 you know, I, I also recognize that here, you know, if on February 7th, council was to provide, uh, make the decision to go to a ballot, that we're just providing the language and it's the community that will despite the answer to the vote. But in even determining the language, um, I've been struggling because I see these two sides. So as you said, Mary, we're just throwing out our thoughts and I want to just be very open and honest that this has been a really difficult decision and it's a hard one. And I've kind of had, I've had quite a few discussions with some strategic leaders in our community today. And in one of them, you know, I kind of, with one of those individuals, I ended with the thought that, you know, maybe, you know, we all recognize too, that, let's be honest, this is, let's just say it's an extra $300,000 a year perhaps to go towards housing, it's not enough. It's not nearly enough. That doesn't even begin to move the needle on housing, but it's also a step forward. It's also potential progress towards something that we all recognize as a community need. So just throwing, that's, that's what's going through my head. I'm just going to throw it out there.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you for sharing that. I'm looking for other counselors, uh, counselor, uh, Kim, I see you have your hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Melissa, I, I agree with you. When you look at the 65% allocation, it's 2.35 million. And it's distributed among a myriad of resources that are things that we might want to do. And I don't think it really gives enough to housing. I don't see how we could do that. And we'd have to take the whole thing essentially probably. So, um, but again, I don't want to get into the weeds about the taxes. What I want to do is look at the bigger picture. You know, what initiatives do we want to do? What's the magnitude of funding? And then how do we fund them? So I, and I agree with you, that's one of the challenges I had with today's meeting was like, where do we go with this? Well, I think we need to look at it from that bigger picture and then, and then move down into the details.
Jessica, thank you.
Sure. Um, yeah, I'm going to agree with both, uh, Melissa and Kim. Um, it's a balancing act, right? And we're trying to, um, make sure we're supporting businesses and our, our economy and also, um, have affordable housing. Um, I pulled up some, you talked about looking at lots of data points. I pulled up, um, some, uh, some budgets for, uh, destiny, or some marketing budgets of other towns. Um, and we're right with that 2.3 million or whatever, we're right in the middle of the pack. There are, if you look at like budget per capita, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, you know, counties that are lower than us, but there's eight that are higher than us. And, you know, same with overall budget. And I don't, I want to be clear that I think that we all agree that there are critical challenges facing our community, which include affordable housing. And it's not an either you support tourism and funding marketing, or you support affordable and workforce, forest housing. Um, I agree with Kim that we have to look at the bigger picture. Um, I don't believe that diverting funding from here for tourism will fund solutions for housing. And so I think that we want to look at what will, you know, move the needle and be effect, effective. Um, so I want more time, um, to look at where the money's going to better be able to make more informed decisions on how the money is being spent. Um, I want to take our time with this decision and really get the full picture of, um, everything that this council, you know, wants to do and make a priority and how to fund it. Um, as we move forward, I do support a percentage, um, with a potential cap on marketing effort. So if we like stick with this percentage, but maybe we, you know, like, because someone was saying, well, there's a potential that this could be $5 million going to marketing. Well, okay, well, maybe we have a cap on that. So, you know, that is never the case. Um, I support, I do support making sure areas like arts and culture that are always the first to be cut, have a set pot that we always pull for them. Um, you know, I, I do like the potential of a flexible council discretion pot because I don't think that we can always know what we'll need to address current city needs and the effects of tourism that we're going to see within our city. Um, we don't want to be constantly going back for reallocations as needs change. Some years and decades, we may need housing, some we may need more transit, some we may need increased police presence or e-bikes, um, with how to deal with, um, how to make our community better. So those are just kind of my thoughts and, um, as we move forward, things to think about.
So I, I don't see any other hands up, so I want to just make certain that Jose's getting clear direction. This is not a vote. Um, and I think I've heard things, but I'd like to put it so that there's no ambiguity. I'd like to put it in a question of support for or not. And I'd like to offer just from what I've heard, uh, a sense of, is there support for any discussion of the lodger's tax before the February 7th due date? That would be one question, is there support for it or not? Um, and any, in any way, or I guess the question would be, what I've also heard from this several is, is there any support for, um, a discussion that might remove housing from the equation, but look at any other allocations? I just want to make certain because this is our opportunity. If, if things are going to happen, they're going to happen now. If not, and then, um, so I just want to be, have the, the most specific direction provided to council. Can I get a round of question one, any support for any discussion and any support if housing were removed from the discussion? Thank you. Thank you for, uh, honoring my request.
What do you, what do you, what do you mean by housing removed? I'm confused by that question you're asking.
I heard people say that this isn't going to solve housing this little bit, so I, but I also heard support for the others. So I'm trying to get a sense of just leave it? Or is there a discussion of, can take this to the voters? Because I was following up on your note, Melissa, take it to the voters, but remove housing and have it be, you know, some of the other topics and a reallocation. I just want to make certain I'm hearing.
I think your first question was the important one.
Yeah.
Which, does council want to take up the lodger's tax conversation again before the, or seventh deadline?
All right, if that's clear, let's leave it with that.
And that's a different answer than if we don't, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying my question. Let's stick with that and then we'll have the direction for the city manager and staff.
And I've ended follow up on that. I personally would like the lodger's tax to be part of the conversation of how do we fund our initiatives to what magnitude do we need to fund them? So I don't see any, I want to see it be a part of a conversation, not a standalone conversation.
I, I, I agree, I wanted to be part of a bigger conversation. I know we had talked about that later on, but I'm not in support of it going out, um, to vote right now.
Okay.
I think I heard where Olivier stood previously, unless you've changed your mind, Olivier, which would, you know, we can all count. And so I, and therefore, you know, I, I am absolutely in, uh, would be, um, looking forward to a holistic, larger discussion on how we address housing most appropriately and effectively in our community. I did get that feedback from one strategic leader in our community that said, in their opinion, we really have potentially one shot at this and we should do it right. That would support, this conversation would support that kind of approach. Um, so if the community, if this council is leaning in that direction, I would support it.
Thank you, Melissa, and I will end by saying, of course, I expect, I, uh, expect a holistic discussion of the council for how to fund all of our initiatives beyond housing, also infrastructure issues of a police station, other things. I do see this as an opportunity to put in what in my mind is the appropriate allocation for marketing. Uh, and I would prefer to see this discussed, but I will honor the, the consensus of council. Um, yeah, I believe that that's the important role. And I also think it's very important for each of us to have been able to speak and to listen to each other. So Jose, do you feel you have adequate direction?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Olivier, did you have something? Because, oh, go ahead.
Clarification, can I?
Please, yes, please.
Jose, could you, uh, state what your direction is that you believe you have gotten from council?
That, uh, the lodger's tax reallocation is not moving forward for discussion at any further time.
Okay, thank you.
And a day, a holistic discussion of funding, Jose?
I believe we're already having that at our retreat, Mayor.
Yes.
Not sure that, I don't want to tie one end with the other. I think that was already going forward.
Yeah, thank you. I, I, that was my expectation of the retreat. Thank you.
Can I do one small clarification?
Please.
Just Jose, I think that at the retreat, during the holistic discussion, I wouldn't take the reallocation of lodger tax completely off the table. I would just personally like to consider it in conjunction with the other potential sources of revenue. At least that's, was my take. I don't know if other people felt the same way.
Yeah, I felt the same, Melissa. I, I took that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's mine as well. And I believe that was also, Olivia, I believe that was part of your intent. So it's a holistic view with any sources available.
For sure. I think to clarify, just the reallocation was just not for this April election. So that's what the direction I took was just not for this election in April.
Thank you. That's great.
So I'd like to ask Jose, um, first of all, I'd like to thank council. Uh, I think this was an important discussion. We set those as guidelines for timing. But I gave advance notice that I was going to honor the intent of this discussion first. We have a belief of 20 minutes left and we have Cynthia to give a presentation. Jose, I'd like your opinion. Shall we go forward with that or will we be cutting her short, too short for what it's hoped to accomplish? And Cynthia, I see you in there. So I'd like an opinion. And, but I also would like to try to honor, um, the need for a proper break as well. Unless council is willing to go longer, that's the other option.
What I would say, Mayor, is, um, 20 minutes is a pretty tight timeframe. Uh, I think that we probably should make sure that we have, uh, enough time allocated for it. I'd, I'd hate to try to rush it short or feel like it rushed short. Uh, because it definitely is kind of a, a place to get some input from council on how we do our monthly financial reports and what, you know, may want to be changed or, or not. And this was coming from our budget retreat. So from a, a staff standpoint, I think, you know, we would be very, uh, we would be supportive of just moving it to a time where we could allocate the, uh, efficient time and resources needed. So we don't feel like we're rushing through.
Very good, council. Is there support for that? I'm looking for nodded heads where yes, Jessica, Kim, Melissa and Olivia, yes. Then I believe since there's nothing else agendaized, we would call this meeting to an end and we will come back at 5:30. Any, any discussion about closing the meeting early? All right, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.